It is my pleasure to call to order the Oak Park City Council meeting on August twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Norris, would you please call the roll?
Mayor McClellan. Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Present.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Radner.
All right, we are going to go to the consent agenda, and this is part of our agenda where we look at it as a single item. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, with just one amendment, if item A on the consent agenda could be discussed, the regular city council meeting minutes from, I believe I saw a clerical error there.
Okay. Do?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Take this up. So do we go to A? Okay.
So on A, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, it just has absent Burns and Whitehead on the vote for the retirement board, but I believe we all were present at that meeting. It might just be a clerical. And we all voted unanimously.
Okay.
It's page seven of our agenda. Of our packet.
Okay. So that will be corrected then. Okay, we need a motion to approve with the correction?
So moved.
Second.
We got a lot of work tonight.
By the way, is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
Yes, there is, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the rest of the consent agenda includes a special city council meeting minutes for August seventh, two thousand twenty-three, request to receive the fourth quarter fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three investment report, request to receive the fourth quarter budget to actual report, planning commission meeting minutes for June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, request for authorization to bid the two thousand twenty-three public safety fire gear project, request to approve the calendar year two thousand twenty-four free garage sale dates, licenses new and renewals submitted for August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved by Councilwoman Burns and seconded by Councilman Whitehead. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
And Councilmember Burns.
Well, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, motion passes. All right, we are recognizing visiting elected officials, do we have any? Not tonight, okay. What about communications? We don't have any, no public hearings either. We have a special. We do have a special presentation. And that would be the strategic planning quarterly update. And we are going to ask Deputy City Manager Crystal Van Vleek to come up, talk about our strategic plan.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Tonight I have our quarterly strategic plan report. We did not give a presentation for the first quarter, so this actually looks back on the first six months of the calendar year. Just as a refresher, this is a strategic, this is a report that looks back at the, or that is looking at our progress for our twenty-two-one through twenty-twenty-six strategic plan, which we are weirdly pretty far into at this point. Seems crazy, it seems like we just did it yesterday. But the city administration created an action plan that guides the staff over the five years in how to achieve the goals that you all set forward in the plan, and so the report is intended to give you a look at what we've been doing to reach those goals. So I'll quickly, just a quick overview of our vision statement, and I won't read it, but I'll leave it up here for a second just so everyone can get a look at it. Also, just a note, in the agenda packet is a much more in-depth report. This presentation is really just to highlight, for brevity's sake, just to highlight some of the things that are included in the report. It'll go over, the report looks at our six goals and the objectives underneath each of those goals, which is how, and then the action items that help us to obtain those objectives, which ultimately help us to reach our goals. Okay, our first goal is to deepen sense of place and community identity. One of the objectives under this goal is to attract and retain a mixture of robust businesses into the city. Our economic development department is always, always busy doing this. The economic development department has been actively soliciting mixed-use development on Eleven Mile, and this idea is clearly taking hold, as one of the property owners currently has his property listed to attract mixed use. While the economic development department is trying to find partnerships with other active chambers, they are also hosting quarterly events for Oak Park businesses in that time. This way, our business community has provided some of the value that they would normally get out of a chamber of commerce, which we don't have an active chamber of commerce right now. They're also working with the library, the city of Southfield, and Lathir Village to host business, I'm sorry, business training events quarterly. The next one is this week, and the library and the economic development department are actively promoting the Oakland County Thrive Organization. Another objective under that goal is to celebrate Oak Park's diversity through events and programs that attract people throughout the region. This year, the Juneteenth Subcommittee hosted its annual Juneteenth Jubilee on June eighteenth. This featured a full program, including a mile walk, a health fair, local entertainment, and scholarship awards. The library celebrated African-American History Month with a family concert, storyteller of traditional African fables and musical instruments. They also celebrated Jewish Heritage Month with a concert featuring Jewish music and Jewish cultural storytime. ACDC hosted the first in-person World Dance Day since the pandemic, and it went off wonderfully. The communications department continues to promote our events with robust communication strategies. And those are all outlined in the report, but I won't go over them right now. Another objective under that first goal is to invest in public art experiences. The City Hall Art Exhibit Program continues to host quarterly exhibits and artist receptions. We have an artist out there, I'm sorry, we have an exhibit out there right now. And her, I think that reception was about a month ago. The library is just wrapping up its tiny art show. Residents had the opportunity to pick up tiny canvas, decorate, and return to be featured in the library art show, which was, I believe, just taken down. And the Dog Park mural is finally complete. Another objective is to provide programming that responds to the needs of all demographics of the community. The library continues to increase early literacy programming through both library and Oakland County Great Start, and also continues to provide a variety of programming that meets the needs of all patrons. The recreation department continues to hold events for all ages, including sports leagues, martial arts, day trips, dance classes, and health and wellness programs for all ages. Another objective is to foster social interaction and a sense of ownership at all of our city's public spaces. This summer's concert series has kicked off, drawing in residents and visitors to Shepherd Park every Thursday evening. The recreation department also hosted incredibly successful Fourth of July and another great summer blast. Another objective is to identify the best uses for city property to ensure equitable access to quality public spaces. The city has been actively working on obtaining funding for the Event Hub, a new public space situated in the green space between City Hall and the library, which will include a four-season farmer's market and event space, an amphitheater, reflection garden, and walking pass. The Connector Park, a small park attached to the Nine Mile Linear Park that connects it to the adjacent neighborhood, is finally under construction, and the Dog Park is now open. The second goal, foster an engaged, informed community. One of the objectives under this goal is to ensure effective, meaningful communication with the community. The communications department continues to actively engage with the community through multiple channels, providing information on upcoming events, important information, emergency notifications, and community resources. We are in the process of opening a Next Door account to use for additional emergency notifications, like snow emergencies, garbage delays, public safety news, et cetera, and looking into a Ring account as well. We sent six e-blasts for snow emergencies this year, had six Facebook posts and two Instagram stories, and sent two emergency text messages. We added two hundred and eighty-seven new emergency e-blasts in two thousand twenty-three so far. We hosted the annual State of the City address in May. Public Safety brought back the beloved Citizens Academy this year. We hosted Coffee with the Cop at Dunkin' Donuts in April. And the Ice Cream Truck has been patrolling throughout the summer, delivering sweet treats and fostering positive interactions. Another objective is to increase positive media coverage, and I won't go through all the numbers, but we've done a wonderful job at doing that. And the communications department is working with Metro Mode for consistent coverage over the next three years, and has submitted six press releases to the press this year to control our message and shared numerous stories via social media. The third goal is to cultivate organizational excellence. One of the objectives under that goal is to provide high-quality, friendly, responsive customer service. We have answered nearly five hundred requests through the GovQA system the first half of this year, with an average time of three days to fully close out. Our resident services coordinator has been working closely with residents on various issues and assisting departments and residents in utilizing the GovQA system. The communications department and the resident services coordinator work together to identify topics and areas where residents are having issues and increase communication as needed. Recently, the resident services coordinator, communications department, and the municipal services department revamped the RAP brochure, and staff has redistributed that as a result of complaints heard via the Community Resource Center. And lastly, the city recently updated its phone system. It comes with additional features and increased efficiencies so that we may provide better customer service. I apologize, the graph is a little bit difficult to read, but we have so many different request types that there's really not a good way to show it, that you can, this is probably the best way to show it. But this breaks down all of our request types over the past six months by type, so you can kind of see some of the big issues. Some of it has to do with the time of year, tree maintenance, potholes. Public Safety always, always has quite a few as well. But this is just to give you an idea of kind of how, how they, the types of requests that are most popular. So in these reports, we want to start giving, providing some more data here, and this is just kind of the first graph that we provided, but going forward, we'd like to start providing a little bit more information as far as what we're getting in the GovQA system. And the last goal that we're going to highlight tonight is ensuring a safe and comfortable environment for everyone. One of the objectives is to provide high-quality public safety services. We're happy to announce that the public safety body cameras have been fully implemented. And another objective is to sustain and expand a safe and comprehensive transportation network for all users. A few things that we've been doing over the past six months include public safety with the assistance of the Traffic Safety Committee, contracts with TIA or the Traffic Improvement Association to gather and analyze traffic data at possible dangerous intersections. Public Safety deploys two speed trailers daily and follows up with selective enforcement. This year's budget includes doubling the miscellaneous concrete budget to focus on particularly poor areas. And the Nine Mile repaving project is nearly complete, as you may have seen. It includes a protected cycle track on the south side of Nine Mile. And if you haven't noticed, we moved the bike lanes. They were north and south, both had a bike lane, we moved them all to the south. And this added, I think, a more protected cycle track, as well as having the added benefit of providing an even larger buffer to the Linear Park. So that is all for tonight.
Thank you, do we have any questions? I do want to ask you one thing. One of the objectives is expanding housing options, and a housing study is mentioned here. What are we doing in that area? What kind of housing study, what are we looking at?
Do you want to take?
Yeah.
We are, we've actually, I believe, retained a consultant at this point, but we are actually in the throes of putting together a formal housing study for, Kim Maroney's actually handling this, but for the entire city, so that is in process.
Do we have property for housing?
We do not, the city does not have property for housing, but the study takes private property and other housing styles and, you know, other mixed use, uses and things like that into consideration. And in addition, I believe we did incorporate the areas of, that were proposing to be demolished for possible housing over here, adjacent to our City Hall, library complex over here, so those were included as well. And that would be probably more senior housing than anything else. But this study will guide us as we're helping to develop some more concrete plans for that kind of stuff.
Excellent, I noticed the Connector Park, it looks great, it's very exciting. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have to accept the report? All right, so we can move on. All right. Okay, next, we are going to look at special licenses. Ten A, we have a request for special event license and waiver of application fee, submitted by the City of Oak Park Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission for Oak Park Film Festival to be held September eighth through tenth in the Water Tower Social District. Is this our second one or third? Is it third? Okay. Anyway, is there a motion to approve the special event license and waiver of the fee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got Councilwoman Burns approving the motion, seconded by Councilman Whitehead. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Well, I just have a comment, I think they are successful since this is our third one.
I think so.
It's been going great, the ACDC Committee, and I see one of our commissioners here, they've been doing a lot of hard work on the Film Festival, so it's, it's an old Hollywood theme, I think, this year, so it should be pretty cool.
Cool.
Are we going to be able to dress up, red carpets, that kind of thing? That was nice.
What time are they showing, do you know?
We have a request for, the next is a request for a special event license submitted by Maria Gilliam Perkins for cerebral palsy awareness event to be held October eighth of this year in Shepherd Park, Shed One, from nine AM to three PM. Is there a motion to approve the special event license?
So moved.
Second.
Approved by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilman Whitehead, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, there's a motion to approve payment of invoices submitted by Garen Lucal Miller for legal services in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got approval by Councilwoman Burns, a second by Councilman Whitehead. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar.
Yes.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead.
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes. Can hand out those special event licenses, which is exciting. Next, we have a bid, and I'm going to say that Councilwoman Burns is going to be awfully happy about this one because the Shepherd Park restroom project is underway. We have a request to award the bid for the two thousand twenty-three Shepherd Park Restroom Project, M dash seven-five-nine to KAB Enterprises of Lincoln Park, Michigan, for the total amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents. City Manager Tungate.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Director Dave DeCosta to speak to this one, but I do want to say this is a good news, bad news situation just from the standpoint that I do believe there's going to be a delay in some of the stuff that we're purchasing as far as, but you want to elaborate on that for us, please?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager Tungate. In the May first, two thousand twenty-three regular council meeting, the city council awarded the two thousand twenty-three Shepherd Park Restroom Project to be bid. The project was advertised, and twenty-five contractors viewed the documents. On June, or, I'm sorry, July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, one bidder was received and opened. The low bidder, KAB Enterprises of Lincoln Park, submitted a bid of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents for a precast concrete structure. There is two hundred thousand dollars budgeted in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four Parks and Recreation Improvement Fund for this expenditure, and it's recommended that the city council award the bid to KAB Enterprises for the amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and seventy-five cents be approved. And to elaborate on what City Manager had alluded to, unfortunately, the lead time with this particular product is, originally, we were told for the two weeks. The vendor reached out to the supplier, they're going to try and get it from another plant, and they're promising us a six-month lead time. So the good news is, we can do some of the legwork ahead of time and be prepared for them in the spring, but it is looking like construction will not happen until at least then. You may notice in the bid tab, we went with the precast concrete structure, it's going to last longer, less maintenance, it's going to really suit our needs better. The wood structure that they bid out also had a ninety-day lead time, which is going to put us well into the late fall, early winter as well. So we figured with the delays, we really wanted to go, the project is going to last much longer, and that's why it was precast concrete.
So Dave, I want to, if you could, just elaborate a little bit more on what we're going to do between now and when we get this installed, and then if you could, just so members of the public know this, where is this going to go within Shepherd Park specifically?
Sure, so we've looked at it for this a while, you know we've been looking at this project, we actually looked at it a couple of years ago, was not feasible at that time during COVID, but we've decided on a location right outside Shelter Two. Within the next two, three months, we're going to get with the contractor to complete the specs for the footings and the foundation, bring the utilities in, which is going to be your water, electric, possibly gas and sewer. So we're going to work on that through the fall, and then we're going to be ready to go for them in the springtime once the weather breaks.
And how long will it take them to build them?
They have not indicated that, but it sounds like it's a couple of week installation. It's not, they haven't alluded to an exact timeline yet, but with the precast, they kind of put it, bring it on site, fit it together, piece it together, so a couple of weeks.
What does the project entail?
So this project is going to include the permanent structure of two unisex bathrooms, a small utility chase in the middle, and it'll, really what it's going to do is give Shelter Two the benefits that Shelter One has, which is the restrooms. We have two locations for restrooms in the park now, and this is kind of that middle ground, right between Shelter One and the pool. So this is going to provide the much-needed restrooms in that area.
And I don't want to keep belaboring this, but just, there's a lot of moving parts here, so I just want to clarify that we are not doing this to Shelter One, because part of our agreement with Oakland County is that they're going to be doing this to Shelter One.
Correct.
And revamping that kitchenette and the bathrooms associated with that too, so this is adding additional restrooms to Shepherd Park now, to Shelter Two.
Correct.
And there'll be a standalone building?
Yes.
How many stalls, toilets?
There is just two, there's not going to be multiple stalls, it's just going to be two separate unisex bathrooms.
Just two?
Correct. We have three over by Shelter One, this is going to add an additional two.
And we have another, what, six-month delay before it started? Another two months before it's completed?
Well, we're hoping in six months that we're ready to go, and we're waiting on the supplier to deliver the materials, and at that point, we're hopeful it's a couple of week install, and we can, we can cut a ribbon and get in.
So Dave, we're going to do the prep work, though, so that when the precast concrete forms are shipped to us, so we're going to do the concrete base, the utility work all prior to that.
Correct.
So when it's shipped to us, we can, they can just literally hook them up. So hopefully, it's less than six months, I know they're telling us that, but.
That's exactly the plan.
And when will the county start to work on the Shelter One bathrooms?
Our agreement, I believe it starts the construction of those bathrooms and working that out, probably about a year from now, next September. There's a lot, there's a lot of details with that project still ongoing, so it's going to be a little bit for those yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, just to clarify on that, so I just wanted to stress that the county, the full county Board of Commissioners just approved that agreement, this was two weeks ago. So, believe it or, I know this, we've been going back and forth in meetings with this for some time, but they actually just approved it on their end just two weeks ago, so it's fairly recent.
And they're going to revamp the kitchen too there?
They're going to revamp that entire shelter structure and some other, the playground equipment and some other things, so. Million and a half, one point five million investment in that project, from them, not from our money, from them.
Right.
This was our only bid? This was the only bid?
Correct, this was the only bid we received.
Is that unusual, to get just one bid?
No, I mean, it happens. I did reach out personally to about three of the vendors who I talked to when researching this project. I don't know if they're busy, if they saw the writing on the wall that the timelines were pushed out, but we did only receive the one bid. It's not unusual, it happens.
We checked their work, it's not, we checked their work and their references and stuff?
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? A roll call, please.
We actually need a motion, second on this?
We need a motion.
So moved.
To award the bid, okay?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Whitehead. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. All right, we have a second reading tonight of an, and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter eighty-two, Article Three, Division Three, Downsout, Board of Appeals of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oak Park, Michigan. By amending sections eighty-two dash one-six-one through eighty-two dash one-six-nine thereof, the ordinance amendment provides an appeal process for any resident disagreeing with the interpretation or application of the rates and charges for stormwater, which is a fixed fee and is based on the amount of impervious surface that you have, that would be cement. That is the way the stormwater fee is calculated. So do we have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
One Burns, seconded by Councilman Whitehead. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Motion passes, ordinance is adopted. So residents now have a way to appeal that stormwater fee that they see on their water bill every month. Okay, next we have a report, our City Manager Report, and our City Manager Tungate will conduct this part of the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, members of council and staff, members of the public. Fifteen A, I'm going to take, this is a request for a cost-sharing agreement for the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. This is a grant application program that the city of Ferndale is leading. We have been working with Ferndale, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, Hazel Park, and Madison Heights on a joint Safe Streets and Roads for All grant application for some time. As part of the application for the three hundred eighty-five thousand dollar award, federal award of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, Oak Park's portion of that would be fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents. In order to formally participate, I would need a resolution of support from council to accept this grant program and the corresponding cost share.
Okay.
And for us, you know, the program in its entirety, because of the communities involved, studies the Eleven Mile Corridor, which obviously is our area, Woodward and Coolidge, which is also our area, so.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, we've got, we need a roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion? I know that we on the Traffic Safety Board have talked a bit about making it safer to cross Coolidge if you're heading into Huntington Woods. It's a little dangerous, there's really only two. It's a little dangerous, there's really only two places to, two lights, and there's a big space between them. So I hope that this, this is, we're gonna look at that.
Absolutely, you know, I think that all of these communities working together gives our chances of succeeding and getting the, the three hundred and eighty-five thousand, that much more, so, absolutely.
Okay, wonderful, and now we have a request to approve a resolution supporting the city's application for the Michigan Community Center Grant.
I am gonna ask Deputy City Manager of Community Services Crystal Van Velek to join me at the podium for fifteen B, please.
Good evening again. In the strategic plan, city council listed identifying the best uses for city property to ensure access to quality public spaces and fostering social interaction and a sense of ownership at all of the city's public spaces as top priorities. In addition, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan lists address the need for facilities to better relate to the needs and interests of Oak Park's diverse community and secure assets for the future as a main priority. Through our year-long process of updating the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which included robust community engagement, we gained a comprehensive understanding of what the community, I'm sorry, of what the Oak Park community wants and needs in their recreation offerings. Some of the top priorities that surfaced were increased space for our farmer's market and other events and programming, as well as increased programming, specifically arts and cultural programming and wellness programming. The Oak Park Event Hub will help us in accomplishing all of these things. We have been actively seeking funding for this project through a variety of avenues. The Michigan Community Center Grant is just one of them, we are requesting a grant of two point five million, which is their max grant ask. Matching funds in the amount of three million are currently budgeted in the Parks and Recreation Fund between fiscal years twenty twenty-four and twenty-five and fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. It is recommended that city council approve a resolution in support of the city's application for the Michigan Community Center Grant.
Very exciting, yes, very exciting.
Mayor Pro Tem, may I just, a little bit off-base, but I, I do wanna take this opportunity to just thank Crystal and other staff members for the amazing amount of these grant applications that have gone in and raised literally millions of dollars for our recreation efforts. And, and you know, when we're raising money like this, and assuming we get this one, and we've received others and, and have those in, in hand, that is less money that our taxpayers have to spend out of their own pockets, because we've raised it from other sources. So I can't stress enough how substantial that effort has been and the millions, literally millions of dollars that we have raised for the Community Center project and our other Parks and Recreation amenities that we're actually going to the voters and asking for their approval on coming up in, in November, so. Tons and tons of that, so just thank you very much for the hard work, Crystal, for you and your staff for that.
Who would administer this grant, by the way, which department?
It would be, if we receive the grant, I think it would mainly come out of the admini- from our office.
No, I mean, on the state level?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is from the Labor and Economic, the, the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Is it, has it been around for a while?
I believe it's ARPA money, so no, it's out, yeah.
All good news?
Need a?
Do we need a motion to approve?
So moved?
This grant request?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, we are on to fifteen C, Mr. City Clerk Ed Norris, please.
We have an election coming up in November, November seventh, you've been hearing a lot more about that in weeks and months to come, but tonight we have a resolution authorizing a temporary relocation of two polling precincts for that election. Jackson Center, Casa, in Ferndale School District is our polling location for precincts fifteen and sixteen. It's not down yet, Jax- Jackson Center is going to be demolished soon, and new lower elementary school is probably not going to be quite done for November, so we need to move fifteen and sixteen temporarily. Ferndale School District has offered upper elementary, two-four-two-two-zero Rosewood, and to house fifteen and sixteen, that is where we have precinct fourteen. So we have a resolution that temporarily moves precinct fifteen and sixteen with your approval for the November seventh, two thousand twenty-two general city election to Ferndale Upper Elementary, twenty-four, two-twenty, Rosewood. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Sorry about those people at home that didn't hear all that, but, so that's the resolution that we have tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Okay, fifteen D, I would like to call up our fairly newly-appointed Deputy Director of Public Safety, Sean Tetler.
Thank you, good evening, and thank you on behalf of Public Safety for giving me the opportunity to present this in front of you today. City council recently approved the purchase of the Axon Body worn camera system, the Axon in-car video system, and the Axon TASER system for the Public Safety Department in the current twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. The budget amount of the project totaled seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which five hundred and sixty thousand was covered through a federal grant. As part of the Axon Body worn camera project, the cost of the Axon redaction software of thirty-three thousand, three-seventy-nine, forty was not accounted for in the initial cost of the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The redaction of certain images, evidence, property, and other items is required by law before any video footage may be released to the general public, media, attorneys, et cetera. Without the redaction software, Public Safety would in essence have to hire additional staffing to manually complete this task for the thousands of Freedom of Information requests that we recently receive, or that we receive yearly. The five-year Axon redaction agreement, which is attached to this agenda item, was reviewed by our attorneys at the time of the initial purchase of the Body worn camera project. The total purchase price of the Axon redaction software for the five-year agreement is thirty-three thousand, three-seventy-nine, forty. Today, we're asking that city council authorize a budget amendment in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents to be taken from the general fund balance to cover this expense, included in a packet is the quote for the project.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I, if I could just ask Deputy Director to just elaborate a little bit, I know, you know, in, in my communications with, with you and the staff in Public Safety, one of the things that's, I think, most notable to me is that, yes, this may cost thirty-three thousand, but the amount of staff hours that we save not having to literally go in and, you know, review the, the footage, let's call it.
So put it in perspective.
Yeah.
Video of the event takes place, you can go in and identify the person that you need to subdue their image. You draw a box around their face, and then the technology will follow that person until their face is no longer seen, blocking it the entire time. If you didn't have the software, every frame, you have to hit the spacebar, moving the person, when they move out of the box that you draw, you have to redraw the box, spacebar, spacebar, spacebar. It would take infinitely longer than the actual video footage is. It also has the technology that you can do the same thing to photographs on the wall, pieces of mail on, on tables and things like that, so you're blocking out necessary things, where you literally have to do that with every object there, this allows you to capture it, play the video for several seconds or minutes, as long as it's still on the screen, and then when they're out of the screen, you recapture that same image and it continues on, so it saves an extraordinary amount of time.
And money.
Correct.
Good.
Is there a motion to approve the payment?
So moved?
Second.
Budget amount, okay, we've got, motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilman Whitehead, we need a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, fifteen E. I would like to ask our city assessor, Dawn, to please join me at the podium for a request to approve the lot combination application submitted by Corso Building and Ventures LLC for parcels on eleven mile, eleven-mile road. Dawn?
And Corso Building applied to provide some lots, where they are, they have buildings, they're all vacant.
I think, is your mic, I'm sorry, is your mic on?
Sorry. They're developing an industrial flex facility, they already have site plan approval from the building department and a brownfield approval. We just need city council's approval to combine all of these lots together.
So moved?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We need a roll call vote for this?
Sure, Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes, do we have any discussion here? I, I just have one question, Dawn, sorry. What, what is the virtue of, of combining all these parcels, why, why do it?
I'm assuming, I'm, you know, I'm not in the planning department, so I'm assuming that putting these parcels all together has something to do with whatever it is that they're trying to build over there. They have a site plan approval for some sort of facility, and in order to build that facility, they have to put, combine all of these lots together to do that.
I, can I just, yeah, and I'm, and I wanna just echo what Dawn just said, I think, I'm totally speculating, but, I mean, obviously, with one parcel ID, i- if you're the owner, it simplifies, you know, you're getting one versus, you know, four or five, I think in this case, different mailings and different, you know, taxes and it just simplifies everything.
You can't build across lot lines, they have to be all one complete parcel in order to build there.
Got it, and what is the total area of Joan Heights? I didn't know that it had a name, but now we know that this is called Joan Heights, how, how big is it altogether?
I would have to actually look at the original plat, I, cause each subdivision, you know, they could have, they have a hundred, they could have four hundred. It just depends how they were originally platted, when they were platted back in, most of them are in the fifties.
Okay.
Can I, can I just, I, I don't, I'm again speculating, but I'm guessing it's probably, because it's four or five, I'm sorry, combining five parcels, so if it's just, if it was originally platted as, you know, Oak Park parcels are platted, residential maybe, then we can assume this is what, about an acre and a half of property, give or take, about an acre?
That's okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
One point six acres.
One point six, okay.
Thank you, okay, fifteen F, I would like to call up Deputy Finance Director Josh Johnson.
Thank you, City Manager Tungay, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council, I'm back. I'm just asking for the approval of a one-year extension of the audit contract this year with our current auditors Raymond for a total fee of sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. They've been with us for about ten years now, so we've had them for quite a while. The reason for the one year is because of the high inflation rate, we felt it was appropriate to go out for bid next year. Oh, is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, due to the high inflation rate, we felt like it was appropriate to go out to bid next year. We wanna make the pricing competitive, so that's why we did the one year this year. So we're just asking for recommended action of approving the one-year extension for our auditors, Raymond.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve a one-year extension of the audit contract with the current auditors Raymond for sixty-one thousand dollars and sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilman Whitehead, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Fifteen G, I would like to call up our very own resident city engineer, Kara Grissimer.
Thank you, City Manager, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. We are presenting the amended contract with MDOT for the Nine Mile Resurfacing Project that has just recently been completed. The amended contract with MDOT for the construction of the Nine Mile Resurfacing Project will be in the total of one point, well, about two million dollars, just shy of two million dollars, which is our share of the Nine Mile Road project per the awarded bid. Some pay items were removed from the project, so the total cost owed to MDOT will be less than the total amount in the contract. We recommend that you adopt a resolution approving the contract number twenty-three, fifty-one, eighty-six with MDOT for the Nine Mile Road Resurfacing Project.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved?
By Councilwoman Burns?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Whitehead, a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Edgar?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitehead?
Yes.
And the motion passes, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we are called to the audience. Do we have anybody wishing to speak? Yes, we do. So, please. Please give your full name and address.
Hello, everyone, my name is Dana Braxton, I'm at twenty-one, six hundred Kipling, and unfortunately, I'm here for the same issue, it's the cars racing down North End, it is getting ridiculous. I can even go with the fact that it's noisy, I can overcome that, it's getting worse. I was even gonna videotape it, I was just like, I don't wanna be that person, but it's, cause I live right on the corner of North End and Kipling. It is getting, I mean, it's ridiculous, the speeds are speeding up, I mean, it's louder, it's cars, it's motorcycles, it's everybody, and it goes down all the streets, it's, it's just getting a little ridiculous. So again, we've asked a couple of times, can somebody come out, maybe if we just even saw a presence? I understand they're busy, I understand Public Safety has so many things to do, we are understanding of that, right? But if some, even if we just have them drive, maybe, you know, if they're doing something, maybe extend the ride around, just something, just to show a presence, it is getting absolutely ridiculous, somebody is going to get hurt, I guarantee you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Oh, hello, William Parker, twenty-four, two-zero-zero Church. I'm here to gladly report that my grass has been installed, and not only that, you are watering it, which I really appreciate. So kudos to you and your team, that I didn't have to come back under certain, other circumstances. So I appreciate you and keep up the good work, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Hi. Please state your full name and address.
Nahil Uggarwell, I own the property at twenty-two, one-eighty Greenfield. So we bought the property in August twenty twenty-one, it was vacant for many years before that, and we've been really excited to rebuild it, have some sort of national chain or medical facility, something that would be good for the city there. We've run into a lot of bumps along the way. So in September twenty twenty-one, we talked to Salam and Kim at the city office about the property, and they were also really excited. After we met with them, we hired an architect and a contractor, and then we met with them again about a month or two later, and they told us, sorry, in November, and November twenty twenty-one, and they told us about an issue with the wall, there's a wall separating the two neighbors behind us and our property, and it is, it is a, yeah, it's an easement, and there was a wall built, and the property was supposed to be, the wall was built in nineteen fifty-six, and it was supposed to split the properties, but it was built, so the twenty-foot easement is all on our property, and apparently, ten foot of it belongs to the neighbors behind us. And so we've been trying to figure out how to deal with. and apparently ten foot of it belongs to the neighbors behind us. And so we've been trying to figure out how to deal with that. Yeah, so in nineteen fifty-six, the county vacated it and divided it, so ten foot went to us, ten foot went to the neighbors. That's what I was trying to explain. And since nineteen fifty-six, we've, like, our space twenty-two, one eighty has been occupying that whole space, and the neighbors, whoever's lived there since then, nobody's objected to it. So it's been used by twenty-two, one eighty since nineteen fifty-six. We've been seeing a wall there for the last twenty-three years since both of us have been around, and nobody's had any issues with it. Kim and Salam asked us to do a survey just to confirm what was going on, because we had a hard time believing it, but we did the survey, and yeah, that is the situation. So we thought about taking the legal route before, like, you know, just going to our neighbors through a lawyer and figuring it out that way, but then we thought they're our neighbors, let's try to talk to them. So we approached them in person, and when we did, both of them seemed really open to it. They were like, oh yeah, we didn't know this was our property. Like, we're happy to sign whatever you have. Do you have papers right now? And we didn't, because we came kind of just as a friendly chat to figure out how they felt about it. So, yeah, so then we went back to a lawyer to get the paperwork started, and we did, and then we went back to them, and at that point, like, a month later, I think, they were no longer ready to sign. One of the neighbors decided they wanted to build a shed on the easement, and we tried telling them, I don't think anything can be built on it because it's an easement, right? So, we tried telling them that, but they weren't really having it. We, yeah, we tried explaining, you can't build anything on it. We wanted to avoid all the back and forth through, like, court procedures, so we tried calling them a few more times. They weren't really having it. They weren't into it. They hung up on us and so on. Yeah, and that didn't work, so then we ended up having to get a lawyer and go through that whole route. So we've been doing that since February, twenty twenty-two, so it's been, like, more than a year already. Yeah, so we got the lawyer, we got a medi, the judge gave us the mediation route, so we tried that, but one of the neighbors didn't show up. Their lawyer called and said, the, this person is unresponsive, so we can't have a mediation. So that didn't work either. So then we went to the district court, and at that point, one of the neighbors was okay with it, and she was ready to sign. She said, drop the motion, I'll, we'll sign it over, no problem. So, okay, so we did that. So, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, court stuff was obviously very time-consuming, very expensive for both of us, not even just us, for the neighbors as well. So, it's just been hard all around. So, the other neighbor has not agreed to sign anything, and actually, we haven't had much communication, because his lawyer dropped him. I don't think he's gotten on the lawyers. We're kind of just stuck with him. We don't know what to do. We've talked to DTE. We got a no objection certificate for the land split division. So, we're asking for your approval for the land split division. I know we're not on the agenda today, but we're hoping you could do something to speed up the process for us. Yeah.
City Manager Tongate?
Well, I, so, first of all, I'd be happy to speak with both of you tomorrow, and we can have a call, but I think, you know, we'll have to work with our city attorney, obviously, to identify a process, but that, unfortunately, we couldn't consider that this evening. But that process would take place in the form of a petition that City Council could possibly take up at a later date, so.
So I know Dawn tried very hard to put us on agenda, but then I think all the other departments did not review it or could not review it in time. And then I think the Public Works Department had a concern with sanitary, because I think there are some sanitary pipes, I am not sure. And they were also concerned that this easement should stay as it is, which, you know, this wall was built in nineteen fifty-six. We are not bringing, break down, or we're not rebuilding, we're not doing anything. We're just signing the deed over because it's been there since nineteen fifty-six.
Okay, so, again, you'll speak with the city manager, and we'll get you on a future agenda sooner than later?
Thank you. Dawn said, suggested that she will put us up on September fifth, but my mother is ill, and we will be traveling most likely, and so we might not come back on September fifth. But so we took the time today, and we said, let's just have a discussion with the city council.
Thank you.
If she's going to get operated, then I'm going to be traveling for at least twelve days.
So you'll discuss that. Good day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Please state your full name and address.
Good evening, Ken Sherman, two three eight four zero Jerome Oak Park. I just wondered if there's any update from the city on the vacant convent on Oak Park Boulevard. It's been vacant forever. I know that there was talk of, you know, it being turned into a nursing home, which fell apart, so it's been sitting there forever. It's really, even though the grass is being maintained and the windows are boarded up, I mean, I know they changed the boarding of what they had previously to something quote-unquote, you know, more aesthetically pleasing, but to me, I mean, the curb appeal and the blight on the city continues, and I just wondered if anybody has an update as to where that stands, what's being done with it, and is there any thought to it being torn down? That's my first comment. And then secondly, just regarding the dog park, it's been great for my two dogs. We've been there once or twice a day, every day since it opened, so, you know, kudos for the dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Tongate, can you address that?
Yeah, so I do want to just give a little reference to this. So, no one is more frustrated than me or the staff about that property, so there's a long story. The Archdiocese sold the property for development. We expedited the process to try to work with the developer years ago. Of course, the developer disappeared on us, so it's not a city-owned property. We are actually in the process, because we've had it, of potentially filing, or in the process of filing, a nuisance action in Circuit Court, which would potentially force them to remediate the property, whatever that means, could be demolition or redevelopment, whatever it means. So, we are in that process now.
Anybody else?
Please state your full name and address.
Pamela Jarrow, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five in the community. And when I do planning, people know me as PG, which is basically my initials. I came here about a week or so ago, maybe a little longer, talking about a very successful first town hall study session that we had in the city of Southfield. And just to remind you, it's a collaboration between the Southfield Police Chief and the Farmington Hills Police Chief. So now we're doing part two to the town hall study session. So the first one was on how to reduce gun violence. The question that we posed to the audience was, is it possible to reduce gun violence? If so, what is the solution, and how do we accomplish it? This question we're asking, talking about suicide prevention, what's next? How can law enforcement and the community come together to reduce suicides? So, I'm asking for Mayor Pro Tem and a lot of the city officials, and we saw you and the mayor at the first event, asking the public in Oak Park to come and support this event. This is conversation that really needs to happen. We have to find out why our kids are dropping like dominos. Why do they feel that there's no other route other than to take their lives? So it's not just the kids and the veterans and the people that are taking their lives. When they take their lives, they're also taking the lives of their family members, because they grieve, and they lose a part of themselves. So, this is very important. Please come out on Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, from five thirty to eight thirty, and we do start on time. It's going to be at the Hawk Community Center located at two nine 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 five West Twelve Mile Road. And for the people that are not familiar with the Hawk Center, it's formerly the Harrison High School. It's between Middle Belt and Orchard Lake. So please support part two, and we are already working on part three. Thank you.
Thank you for your very important work and for bringing this to our attention. Do we have anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, if not.
We've got a call to the council. Let's start with Councilman Whitehead.
Have a good night, everybody.
And Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Please have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and making us aware of things that we need to be aware of. Good night.